Village of Oxford Planning Commission dated November 21st, 2023. If we'd all stand up, pay respects to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam Secretary, if you please call the roll.
Justin Ballard.
Here.
CJ Gassler.
Here.
Waring Habba. Absent. John Knoll.
Here.
Leslie Pilak.
Here.
Tom Schultz.
Here.
And Scott Flynn is absent.
Yep. All right, thank you very much. This brings us now to the approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to propose that we approve the agenda with this one change. It would be item number 10, listed as Old Business 2023 Action Plan Draft Landscaping Ordinance. I'd like to push that off to a later date to be discussed before the Planning Commission here and challenge the members to read the work that Mario's worked very hard on.
I'll second that. So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, we have an approved agenda for tonight. Approval of the minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes dated November 7th, 2023?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes dated November 7th, 2023.
So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, we have the approved minutes from November 7th. All right, this brings us now to item number six, which is the public hearing. There's a, just kind of before we start, there's a couple of rules related to a public hearing. Just kind of want to go over through some of those things. The public hearing tonight is specifically about the request to rezone 78 Minnetonka Drive from C2 to R1. And typically with regards to a public hearing, it's where the audience gets to stand up, get the opportunity to make comments to the commissioners. It's only comments, you can't ask questions, we can't respond back to you. You typically have three minutes to give your statements. And when you step up to the podium, you state your name and then your address. So with this time, I'd like to make a motion to open the public hearing to, for the request to rezone 78 Minnetonka Drive from C2 to R1.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion, we open the public hearing at 7:04.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, so we are in the public hearing. At this time, does anyone have? If you would please.
Hi, my name's Kathy Graham. I live at 79 Minnetonka, so I'm in the house across the street. I appreciate the opportunity to address the Planning Commission. I strongly feel that parcels should be zoned residential. I was not aware when I bought my house that part of it was commercial. It's too far in off of 24 to be commercial. I already have the dentist office whose lights shine in my front windows. The place that sells the Land Rover, their parking lot lights shine in the windows across all the front of my house. We already have a traffic issue because the speed limit signs weren't reposted after 24 was repaid. And the end of the street is always chewed up with potholes from the trucks that go into the Ace Hardware. Love the Ace Hardware, not complaining about that. But more commercial traffic is not good. It's a really nice little neighborhood. And I know we straddle between the village and the township. But it's a nice little community. There's young families with little kids. There's older people, there's families, there's single people. But everybody does a really nice job of keeping up their house. And honestly, if commercial's across the street from me, it's going to kill my house value and that's my retirement plan. So I'm really hoping you guys will take into consideration the neighborhood that's there. I understand the need for tax revenue from commercial parcels. But also what makes a community a place people want to live is the community itself. So I hope in this instance, you'll look out for the residents and consider how commercial impacts our lifestyle and the stuff we already put up with because we're close to 24. So I don't want that to get any worse than it already is. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Kathy. Anyone else have any public comment?
Hi, my name's Craig Partridge. My address is now 776 North Conklin, but we're the owners of the Minnetonka property. I don't really have a lot to say. This seems obvious on its face. I don't know how it's split by us. I appreciate everybody coming. Its value is the home. It's .07 acres. It's locked in. I don't even understand the value is commercial. It will cost that. I don't have much to say. I just hope this seems as obvious to you guys as it does to me. Thanks.
Thank you, Craig. Anyone else with public comment? Please.
Would you like a tissue? Sir? We have some tissues if you'd like one.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Melanie Charmstrong. I live at 949 Thomas Road and I'm currently trying to buy 78 Minnetonka. So for me, I've been looking for a house for about two years now. I love the location of Oxford. I love how close it is to the commercial properties. And I also love the fact that it's such a cute little community. All the houses on there are gorgeous. You lovely ladies seem like you're very nice. I would love to live next to you. So I would really love just to have a chance to own my first home. I'm only 20 years old. I've been looking for a house for a while and I think this one's perfect. It's so cute. And I cannot live there unless it's residential. So, thank you.
Thank you so much. Anyone else? All right, seeing that there is no more public comment, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
To close the public hearing at 7:07. We have a, we have a second supported. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, so we have, we're closed public comment now. Excuse me, the public hearing is closed. So it's bringing us now to correspondence. Madam Secretary, we do have one correspondence. And we did receive correspondence and it's in conjunction. It's from Victoria Conley in conjunction with item number B in New Business for the sign permit for Victoria's Wine and Dine. Just like to make a note to add that into our, into our meeting minutes.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
There was also an email I got back from the DDA Director today that I shared electronically, but I don't have it printed out for you. Did you receive that I can get it?
I did see it. I did.
Okay.
Yep.
That was related to another sign.
If you would, also print and file that as well.
Sure.
All right, thank you. Now, this brings us to a call to the public. Is there anyone in the public that has any comments that unrelated to the, unrelated to the agenda for tonight? If you would, stand up. Okay, seeing none, this brings us now to New Business. New Business is number A. The rezoning request from C2 to General Business, to R1 Residential for the 78 Minnetonka Drive. Mario, if you please start us off.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chair. Tonight we are here to consider the rezoning of this piece of property. The site itself, as already discussed, for refreshing my memory, is actually comprised of two tax parcels. One parcel that has mainly two detached accessory structures is located fronting on Minnetonka. And then the second tax parcel, which has the single-family structure, is located on a triangular shape parcel located to the north. And as we've seen in a couple of other recent applications, this is related to the fact that the useful boundary bisects this, the detached parcel is located between two. The parcel with the accessory structures is located in the township. The triangle shaped parcel that is, has the home is located in the village. And the applicant has requested to change the zoning from the C2 commercial to the R1 single-family residential. When we look at rezonings, the first thing we look at is the master plan. So not only do we have the 2011 Village Master Plan, we also have a, the South Washington redevelopment plan to look at this particular area. And mainly a look at the parcels fronting on Washington Street and the triangular piece to the rear that's vacant. And commonly referred to as the Washington Triangle. The redevelopment plan really didn't differ from the master plan only in specifying the types of use proposed. It's proposing a commercial property on the frontage of this area on Washington Street and then the rear to be developed as some type of attached single-family homes. And this particular site under this consideration tonight is actually considered or is designated right now as commercial in the future land use plan. And so the idea was, was, or excuse me, the idea of the master plan is to accommodate, or excuse me, is to acquire those parcels fronting on Washington Street and create a redevelopment site that could be for a particular type of use. The plan itself is thinking about a, possibly a hotel or something smaller like a boutique hotel or a bed and breakfast. And then a smaller commercial sites that would be servicing the residents. However, as we know, there has been recent developments along those Washington Street parcels that are more auto-oriented. We have the new car wash that's going in right now in the middle of that site. There's potential for another auto-oriented use to be developed in north of that. And then the two sites directly south, the, where homes have been redeveloped. One is the dentist office and one is the reception office. They've been redeveloped, they have a lot of investment in them. So the idea of acquiring all these properties fronting on Washington to create a redevelopment site, you know, that does seem pretty remote right now. Doesn't seem very likely that that can happen. And one other thing to point out is that even if there was redevelopment on these properties and even if the triangle piece that's supposed for residential, what is, we hope to eventually be redeveloped for residential. The size of this particular property and how it would contribute to that redevelopment would actually be pretty remote. Because of its size and its configuration, you know, it's not going to significantly add to redevelopment. In addition, if it were to remain and the site around it was to be redeveloped, it would be a very simple thing for, for the new development to provide the required necessary screening of the new development from the existing site and therefore incorporate it. Because in the end, because of the size of this parcel, in terms of area, in terms of the shape and its existing use, it really wouldn't contribute to the overall redevelopment. So in the end, if this were to be rezoned, it would really have no impact on the village's master plan. It would have no impact doing this rezoning. We have, we look at other things, look at the site's physical features. You know, it's a relatively flat piece of land. If the site was, if the single-family residence was going to be, you know, have an addition or a redevelopment of it, the site is capable of handling it. In addition, we look at whether the compatibility out of the site, while there are commercial properties to the east, it's adjacent to a single-family neighborhood. So maintaining this as a single-family home would continue the compatibility. We also look at the utilities, the utilities there are capable of providing residential development. And so it's not really any perception that they, they should be able to maintain service without any problem. One other thing to look at also too is whether the site could actually be developed within the current district for a commercial site in this particular case. And in the end, as I mentioned, the size and shape of it would make it pretty, result in a very unique and somewhat untenable commercial redevelopment of that property, especially since the access of the, that the most likely job of Minnetonka. So the idea of that being independently developed for commercial, that's also highly remote as well. One last thing I do want to point out though is that any construction on this site, when we look at the new district, we have to make sure it could actually be redeveloped within the dimension and character requirements of the new district. Within the R1 district, it's not because of requirements, but it's because of, once again, the shape of the site. When you factor in the front yard setbacks, side yard setbacks, and the rear yard setbacks, there is no real building envelope. So if the property were to be destroyed to more than 50% of the true cash value of the structure or if it were, if there was a desire to have a redevelopment of it, to do a tear down and rebuild, it would require working with the township to determine a suitable buildable footprint. If this triangle portion was supposed to be part of this, the one issue that we would be facing, it would be a unique development and we'd have to work with the township determining any kind of redevelopment. However, I would say that the village has previously worked with the township on these unique parcels because there have been other sites in the village where this kind of parcel that's split between the village and township exists. So working with township is not inverted, it can't be done.
Thank you.
That basically, yeah, exactly. Summarizing my comments and then for, with regards to defining the fact and how you'd like to proceed.
Excellent. Thanks, Mario. Do we have any questions? Leslie?
No.
Tom?
Nope.
No, sir.
CJ?
No.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to recommend the rezoning of 78 Minnetonka Drive, parcel ID number PO0427278014 from C2 General Business to R1 Residential.
Awesome. So we have a motion and we have a second from Mr. Pilak. So Madam Secretary, if you please call the vote.
Schultz?
Yes.
Ballard?
Yes.
Gassler?
Yes.
Talbot? Absent. Knoll?
Yes.
Pilak?
Yes.
And Flynn is absent.
Excellent. So we did award that to be rezoned to R1, so congratulations. You're welcome. Welcome to the neighborhood.
Yeah, welcome.
Thank you.
Just as a note, the recommendation that they made to go to council for their final approval at the December meeting.
Right, yeah, thank you.
Thank you for that clarification.
That is important.
All right, it takes us now to item number B for the sign permit application for 12 South Washington. The applicant is Victoria's Wine and Dine. Mario, if you please start us off.
We have to propose one internally illuminated wall sign. It would be 29 foot five square feet in area. So the sign itself does meet the location and different technical requirements of the zoning ordinance. Because it's internally illuminated, that requires the design of the Board of Planning Commission. So that's their quest tonight to have this internally illuminated. This proposal sign is actually going to be comprised of channel cut letters and will be with an LED light source used as eternal illumination. So it'll have the, that halo effect for the lights, for the, for the light, so it'll be a background effect. The lights won't be projecting out and illumination will be the background effect of the light. So one benefit of that is that style does allow the building facade to utilize an effective contrasting background, highlight the supporting material of the building. And some, we do have at least one or two of these already in the downtown. And they are attractive. They are, it's a very attractive style. One thing I just wanted to point out is that the building itself is, has a little bit of historic character to it with some of the architectural features. And the sign style is actually a little bit more contemporary. So when it comes to this particular zoning, the planning commission takes the opinion that, you know, the proposal sign could be a nice modern contrast of those existing elements. Or you might want to have a discussion on whether you feel like it's necessary in a little bit more of a historic style. If you normally have where the, it's a non-mayor wall sign with overhead lights. But in the end, as I mentioned, the sign is, would be very attractive. It's just a matter of how we feel, how the planning commission feels about appropriateness of that sign. So provided you provide that and you quite feel that it is appropriate, then you should, we recommend a preemptive approval of this.
Excellent. Thanks, Mario. Leslie, any questions?
Um, no questions. I think I just want to make a comment, which is that I think that the personal quality of the sign is a very important part of its just that appeal. And whether it is modern or historic is, is to me a little bit of a side issue compared to what it conveys. I do think it's appropriate in light of other signs we have approved. That's my comment.
Thank you. Tom?
Yeah, Mario, just a quick question. Any negative impact from the brightness of the sign to the apartment just next door or across the street?
Across the street, I'd say no, only because it's internally, I'd say, while it's internally illuminated, the lights are actually, the effect is going to be broadcast onto the building wall. It doesn't really come out. So it's like I said, like I described, it's a more of a halo effect. The apartment directly adjacent, you know, it's hard to tell how much the light would shine out. And approach that, those windows adjacent apartments, I'd probably say, probably slim to none actually just because of LEDs are trying to be efficient and not broadcast a lot. Chances are that apartment might have more issues with the streetlights rather than anything. So from this side. Thanks.
Thank you. John?
Mario, help me out here on this. The photometric sensor with the dermer control, we've historically put that on all signs. Is this one that we need to give that some attention to?
I'd probably would say no because once again, it's going to be light that is being projected onto the wall and then it's just a background halo effect. We're concerned about that, those light fields when they're, when the light is being projected forward. Because it's, cast, the, cast, excuse me, the light is being projected into eyes of drivers and that sort of thing. Whereas this case, I don't, it's very negligible to me.
Thank you.
Yeah, a comment that, I think I saw that Kelly from the DDA approved it and I heavily value like their, their thoughts on what goes on in our downtown. And we should consider that too.
Thanks, CJ. Yes, I personally, I took a look at it, reviewed a lot of your notes as well. I, I liked the, I liked the style of the sign. I think it fits very well within it. It meets all the requirements that we do have. So at this point, I, if there is no other comments or questions related to it, would like to make a motion to approve the sign.
Mr. Chair, I've suggested motion for approval.
Sure, perfect.
I'd like to motion that we approve the sign permit application for 12 South Washington Street. Property ID number 0427226003. Applicant Victoria's Wine and Dine to be approved.
I have a motion, looking for a second.
I'll second that.
All right. Madam Secretary, if you please call the vote.
Gassler?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Pilak?
Yes.
Talbot? Absent. Knoll?
Yes.
Ballard?
Yes.
Flynn is absent.
Excellent. Thank you. All right, so now brings us to item number C. Sign permit application for 106 South Washington Street, Posey Logistics. Mario, if you please start us on this one.
This application is for one internally illuminated freestanding sign. There would be six feet of height and a total of 24 square feet in area. So this sign actually does meet our area height and also the location requirements, meaning it meets our setbacks of the zoning ordinance. So in this case, once again, it's the internal illumination that requires a review. So this sign is actually going to be a standard box style sign for two tenants and it's comprised of two co-faces within an aluminum frame. The top third of the sign area is comprised of black and red text and graphics, but then on a white field. While the bottom third is comprised of white letters on a dark blue. As I mentioned, because it's a box style and design, it's a very contemporary, standard, conventional sign. Looking at the structure itself, this was a single-family residence converted office use. You know, it's kind of a lead home in terms of the roof configuration, but you know, based on the materials and colors, there's not anything that can combination. It's historically significant. So this kind of contemporary sign would not contrast with the original. The only thing I just wanted to point out is that, you know, the white field that's the top third could be considered the predominant feature of the sign. Considered in the past sometimes asking the applicant if they would mind inverting the field and the text logo to create a predominantly darker field on which lighter letters are on that field. So that the amount of air, overall area in which the light is projected out of the sign is limited. But you know, in the end, you know, how significant that production is going to be might ultimately be subjective just because of the size of the text and the logos. But in this case, we would suggest that at a minimum, ensure that the sign is not too clear for drivers, that the sign illumination level be controlled automatically. So the planning commission may want to consider if there's any substantial benefit to inverting the colors of the, of the top third of the sign, but in the end, we do recommend the planning commission grant approval for the proposal sign contingent about installation of a photometric sensor with an automated control line and a light luminance level of 100, 100 koude per square inch.
Thank you, Mario.
Mr. Chair, could we ask the applicant if they would?
Mark Johnson. M.R. J. Sorry. Let me, over here. This is our version. Okay. Which is actually what I proposed to the customer initially, you know. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I can, I'll pass out the other two for you. It's helpful. Thanks, Mark.
You gave him just one to pause.
Bye, everyone. Thanks for visiting.
Thanks.
Okay, so we've done our alternative layout, reducing the light space. Obviously, all logos have what they call positive version and a negative. If you think of a Coca-Cola script, it can be black or red lettering on a white background. But it can also be white lettering on a black or red background. So every logo has a positive and a negative. So what we've done is we've changed this to a negative image so that all the black that you see will be totally opaque. Only the white, the inset borders, will illuminate. I originally suggested this to the owner because of the fact that North Oakland Residential Services, which evidently has been there for decades and running from that building, they wanted the white on the blue background. And quite frankly, if you look at the original submission to you, even though the North Oakland Residential Services is a third of the sign, it reads almost like it's half the sign. Because a white letter on a dark background is more effective. Stop sign, even your nameplate's here. Okay? So I find, you know, I kind of, kind of used Mario's letter as a way to go back to my customer and re-proposed to him what I thought he should have gone with to begin with. And once he saw it side by side, he agreed. So this is what we would be doing. However, the one item that you have in your letter about a photocell that is controlled and you're referencing nits, that is actually for an LED message sign. That is not for an illuminated cabinet. Nits are when the LED is actually exposed, which is why you can sometimes, and I understand the reason behind it. When you, sometimes you can see an LED message center that during the day seems way too dim or at night seems way too bright. That's because those LED message centers are meant to be in a location with fixed ambient light, meaning like an airport, a convention center, a stadium. They have no self-leveling, okay? Where true message center
Where true message centers, electronic message centers for exterior use have sometimes, like for instance, Watchfire, which is one I rep, they have 78 different levels, constantly changes throughout the day. This is a 12 inch deep cabinet with vertical light sticks in it, just instead of fluorescent, we really don't use fluorescent anymore. So you have a white 3/16 inch thick plastic face with the micro graphics six inches away from that light source. The way these are built in order to meet National Electrical Code, and I'm a licensed contractor with a state license, you can't put a dimmer on this because the dimmer would actually have to be inside the cabinet, meaning that it wouldn't be visible to sunlight anyways. But by going to the opaque background in the negative image, you're going to have no brighter luminescence or lumens than if you have a fluorescent sign. You're just going to be a lot more energy efficient, you know? I mean, this entire sign is the same as a 120 watt light bulb, the whole thing. I mean, that's why we want an LED. But when you're referencing nits, that's an exposed LED and everything. Although you actually know more than most. You sit there and say, why is it so bright at night? Because it wasn't meant to be outside, it was meant to be, you know, an airport or something like that where the light source never ever changed, so they set it for how bright they want it to be and they leave it for it.
Interesting. Well, thank you for that information.
No problem.
And thank you for the, for the background information on the, on the choices of the color of the sign as well, so.
Yeah, I was actually happy when I saw it.
So, so one of the questions we were going to have is, would you be open to the, to that? So, so you are, and that's what you would prefer to have anyways, okay?
Yeah, definitely.
Mr. Noel, any more questions?
No.
Okay. CJ?
Um, no.
No, just want to clarify, basically this is your new submission.
Yes, yeah, that's what we're going to do.
Tom? Okay, all right.
I'd like to make a motion that we recommend approval of the sign permit application for 106 South Washington Street, parcel ID number 0427279-00. And I'm going to call this an as presented sign layout slash color scheme. And I'd also include a photometric sensor with a dimmer control.
Wait. Such thing doesn't exist for this type of sign.
It's part of, it's part of what we, it's part of what we discussed, it's in correspondence to what we've put in the past. So we're going to continue with the same verbiage and the things, even though, you know, some new information that you might have put for us, but we're still going to move forward with some of the verbiage that we have. Okay?
I mean, I'd like to create one for, what I charge them for.
So we have, so we have a motion for the sign approval. I'm looking for a second.
Second.
CJ with the second. Madam Secretary, if you'd please call the vote.
Noel?
Yes.
Noel?
Gastor?
Yes.
Pilak?
Yes.
Ballard?
Yes.
And Hallmark, Flynn are absent.
Excellent. So we have a proved, proved sign. Thank you very much. Thank you for that information. All right, that now brings us to public comment. So it takes us back to anyone in the public that has any comments to make. Let me just kind of back up. One of the things is, is that we had taken off old business from the agenda just because the light of information that we just got today from Mario. So if we could, just to kind of reminder, if we could review that before our next meeting, just so that we were, know what's in that information, so we're kind of prepared for our next meeting, because we will be talking about the, the rough, the draft on the landscaping ordinance. All right, consultant or administrative comments?
Nothing here.
No, nothing? Oh, usually have some comments.
I'm just happy we got all these signs, went to Mario, acted really quickly on the later one, so we put them all in one meeting and perhaps we are looking at a meeting the first week of, or the first one in December, probably won't happen.
I do have comment.
Okay.
It's an administrative, since we have a couple of new people on the commission, just a reminder, we do send out emails that are, you know, broadcast or group emails to everybody and with information on it, because it's easier than emailing you all individually, but when you respond to those, you need to just respond to the person sending the email and not to everybody, because we want to be careful about not violating the Opens Meeting Act, which means that if there's information in there that could be used to deliberate towards a decision or influence a decision, you might not be doing that in your email, you're just, you know, responding to what you, what you read, but that's what we want to make sure we don't get ourselves in a position where we would be challenged or, you know, have to defend our, what, what we said or did or how we did it. So anytime you're responding to our emails, if you can just reply just to the person sending the email and not to all. And, and again, as a group yourself, you can discuss individually with each other, but you cannot have a, you know, a quorum going, you know, in your discussions if they're online or, you know, or otherwise, so. I just thought that was worth mentioning and we should be, we should remind you of that on occasion, because it's easy to, you know, just hit reply to all.
It's easy to forget sometimes, because you're used to replying to everybody whenever you're attached to an email, especially for like a business situation, it's like everybody needs to know. But thank you for that reminder, appreciate it. Okay, take it, let's take it to reports. Oxford Township Planning Commission?
The planning commission is going to be reviewing the sign ordinance for the township. We worked very hard on the sign ordinance, we're hoping to get that approved into the township board very soon. The work continues on our master plan, our steering committee has met twice now and we continue to have reviews and updates at our regular township planning commission meetings.
I'm just going to make some comment related to that, that planning commission, but can we, ZBA, any information on ZBA?
Nothing pending.
Okay. DDA?
They're not doing anything.
Okay. All right.
They're obviously doing tons and the southeast quadrant behind Victoria's, it's taking a little longer to get that concrete done. They were trying to, going to try to pour last Saturday, but weren't able to get concrete delivered to the job site and then the foreman was sick yesterday, then it rained today, so that's, they had a great week last week and I was hoping they would have got further in completion, but they didn't get as far as we had all hoped, so hopefully they're making some good headway tomorrow.
Yeah, because the, behind, you know, behind Red Knapps and that, what's, that would be the northeast quadrant, right? That looks really, really, really nice. I was, I saw it the other day and I was like, oh wow, this is really.
Parkin Lake came out really great.
Yeah, it looked really fantastic. Yep. Commissioner comments?
I have one.
Okay.
Did, did I hear you say that we do expect to have a planning commission meeting the first week in December?
Do not.
We do not.
We were hoping, because this came in really late from Mario to get this other sign app and he was able to get into it, so we piled them all into here and so we don't expect one the first meeting in December, potentially end the 18th.
Okay, so good, because I'm going to be out of town and I didn't want to miss out.
Hopefully for fun.
All right, thank you.
Yes, for fun.
Any other commissioner comments? Okay, future business, annual report?
Yeah, well, that will be coming in December. Mario's probably been adding to it all year long, but that's what to anticipate in December.
Okay.
If there's no meeting in December, certainly first meeting in January.
All right, takes to adjournment. All those in favor?
Hi.
All right, we're adjourned.